One.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Resolutions hearing. Today is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. It's 2:00 PM and we're in Conference Room 325 at the State Capitol. Before we get started, I'm just going to read through our housekeeping rules. In order to allow as many people to testify as possible, please try to keep your testimony to two minutes per testifier. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify. And after your testimony is complete, the Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images on Zoom. And please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without ability to rejoin. Okay, we'll get into our first agenda item, HCR 158 HD1 and HR 153 HD1 together, requesting the judiciary to convene a working group on to develop landlord-tenant code improvements to increase the supply of housing in Hawaii. There is no one signed up to testify. Oh, and if anyone who isn't signed up to testify but would like to testify can sign up at the table on the right, on all of the agenda items. Okay, is there anyone in the room wishing to testify?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Lindsay Garcia. And members, my name is Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors. I apologize. I think we meant to indicate that we're testifying in person. I apologize if that wasn't submitted properly. But we stand in strong support of this measure. We believe that it will be very helpful to bring a group of stakeholders together to work through landlord-tenant issues over the years and to see if we can better get ahead of a lot of the issues that landlords and tenants alike face in order to have a better and improved rental housing market. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify for HCR 158 HD1 or HR 153 HD1? Okay, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We will move on to HCR 55 and HR 51, requesting the judiciary to conduct a study analyzing how effective existing laws on domestic violence, temporary restraining orders, and harassment by stalking are in preventing continued abuse and harassment. First up, well, we received testimony from the judiciary, Department of Prosecuting Attorney.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Daniel Hugo for the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office. And we offered comment on this bill. We did look at the judiciary's testimony, and we do agree that there are some things that the current resolution requests that may overstep the judicial office. However, there is data that the judiciary does have that would be useful. So we separated our testimony into noncriminal contexts, which is information that we probably wouldn't have, and then the criminal context where the judiciary would have that information. I'm available for more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We received testimony from the Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women in support, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence.
You'll have to bear with me. I don't know where my glasses are. So, good afternoon, Chair, Tarnas, Vice Chair, Poi Poi Committee members. I'm Angie Mercado, the Executive Director of the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. We are the Association of Nonprofit Organizations that serve survivors of domestic violence and those that cause harm in our community. And we do support this measure, and we really support the intent of the measure. And the extensive comments that we have on the actual bill language is really to reflect the fact that as a community, over the last 26 years, the legislature or the city-county Honolulu, City and County of Honolulu have directed us to look at how good or not our laws are with respect to domestic violence. And it just feels like as a community, we haven't really followed up on it. So we followed up on your on your requests, but globally in Hawaii, we haven't done the work to follow through. And data is not enough. Data are just numbers, but without context and story, we don't really know how effective this is. And so one of the things that I've noted is that these studies lacked meaningful survivor participation. And they're really focused on the city and county of Honolulu. And we know that how things are done here are not the same as they're done on Big Island, Maui, Kauai, Lanai, Molokai. And so if we are going to do this, we should pick up on where we've already left off, take the data that we already have, include our neighbor islands, include law enforcement and prosecutors of every single county, and have a meaningful representation of survivors. And we can't do this unfunded. Without personnel and financial resources in this environment, we're just going to have more of the same. Three years from now, somebody's going to ask for a resolution study. Why isn't this happening? Why isn't this going well for survivors in my community? Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, members, questions? For Angelina, can you just briefly explain a little bit about the draft that you proposed in your testimony?
Sure. I'm gonna base this on my memory since I can't see my own notes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But really, one of the things that we wanted to do, and I think there's a, you know, a great point by the prosecutors about who is the direct, who's the best state agency to direct this. And so we really wanted to make sure that there was a working group, and we wanted to have folks at the table and have not only just buy-in, but have meaningful a meaningful contribution to this and really take a look at this from a perspective of what have we already done? How do we narrow the scope on this? Because domestic violence cases are so complex. We're talking about protective orders, temporary restraining orders. We're talking about stalking, which we really haven't studied. If I pointed out in my testimony, the 2017 audit by the city and county auditors, when they looked at the data set, they include they included other crimes, but one of the crimes that they did not include was stalking. So they had terroristic threatening, robbery, you know, 709, 906, all that kind of stuff. So if we really want to do the two things, look at DV, TROs, and protective orders, and then we want to add stalking, we got to pick up where one has left off, and we've got to add a whole new level of analysis. And that's one of the reasons why I try to narrow the scope in terms of how do we know what's really effective when it's subjective? What works for one survivor may not work for another. What works on Maui may not work on Oahu. And we also wanted to extend the timeline because, you know, December, call it mid-December report to the legislature, I don't think is going to have as a meaningful impact unless we want to keep doing this every five years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, any more questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to HCR 23 HD1, requesting the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation and Planning and designing the new Oahu Community Correctional Center in Halava to include a circuit and district court facility and establish a release procedure under which detainees or inmates upon release are transported to a site other than residential communities or public spaces. And first up to testify is Hawaii Correctional Systems Oversight Commission. Okay, they testified in support. Office of Public Defender.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Sunny Gannon, Deputy Public Defender. The Office of the Public Defender is in support of this resolution with an amendment. You know, should the new Oahu Community Correctional Center be built, we think that courtroom in the jail, we hope, would expedite the hearings and lead to more just remedies for individuals who are housed pretrial. There is an issue with the title of this resolution. I'm guessing that the introducer was reacting to community concerns about people being released and coming back to their residential communities, but this is just illegal. Barring individuals from residential communities or public spaces, you know, ordinarily, individuals are not brought back into a squad car after they're released from a bail hearing and then dropped off in some random place. And then, you know, most of Oahu could be considered a residential place or a public space. This violates the First, Fifth, Eighth, Fourteenth Amendment and the Rights Against Freedom Against Movement. So for all those, you know, legal reasons, we suggest amending the title. Other than that, we support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, are you here to testify?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Tommy Johnson, Director of Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. I'll just summarize our testimony. We support the intended as measure. I did have discussions with Court Administrator Rod Miley regarding this matter, and we decided that one multipurpose courtroom would be sufficient to handle both district and district court matters. With respect to the transport of inmates, 99% of the inmates that are being released are picked up by a program or family members. But for those that don't have a ride, we will be willing to transport them to the nearest bus depot where they can catch a ride. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all signed up. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We will move on to HCR 174 HD1, HR 170 HD1, requesting the Department of Human Services, Office of Youth Services and Juvenile Justice State Advisory Council to examine the availability and utilization of INAH-based learning programs offered to youth in the juvenile legal system. There's no one signed up to testify. We received two in support, zero in opposition, one with comments. Is there anyone here wishing to provide testimony?
Vice Chair?
On Zoom?
Yes, Vice Chair, this is Cameron Clark with Debt Free Justice Hawaii.
Okay.
I think that I signed up to testify.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Cameron Clark. I am co-coordinator of Debt Free Justice, the national campaign to eliminate youth fees and fines. I'm also coordinator of Debt Free Justice Hawaii, which is our statewide coalition led by community nonprofit Akulumea Nui. We stand in full support of HCR 174 and HR 170, the House Draft 1. We lovingly call this the NOW Resolution. It was drafted for youth by youth. It was led by the Youth Council of Akulumea Nui, Na'opio Va'vi. In between soccer practice and volleyball practice and homework, they came together to consider what an alternative to the current juvenile justice system could look like. And that is where this resolution was ultimately created from. This committee has already heard Senate Bill 1028, which seeks to eliminate youth fees and fines in the Hawaii Family Court system. And we think of this piece of legislation as an opportunity to look at what the next stage of juvenile justice could look like. In the absence of assessing fees and fines and the alternative to charging fees and fines, youth could be provided opportunities to complete community service, which is focused on and built out of INAH-based learning principles, understanding aloha INAH work, understanding kuliana, and the opportunities that they have to achieve rehabilitation and accountability. And so we believe that this is an opportunity to collaborate with the Juvenile Justice State Advisory Council and the Office for Youth Services in order to ensure that the judiciary is equipped and prepared to promote these opportunities for youth when they do go before the court. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? I just wanted to note for HCR 174 HD1, two supports, zero opposed, one comments. And then for HR 170 HD1, four support, zero opposed, one comments. Okay, we will move on to HCR 185, requesting the auditor to conduct a social and financial assessment of proposed mandatory health insurance coverage for native Hawaiian healing and cultural practices offered through federally qualified health centers. We have testimony in support from Health Committee of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, Papa Ollo Lohkahi.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Keo Pu Rilitz. I'm the Director of Policy and Strategy with Papa Ollo Lohkahi. You have our testimony in writing. We are just offering comments. And as you consider this resolution moving forward, one of the things as a Native Hawaiian Health Board that we wanted to just bring to mind is that when we discuss reimbursements, medical insurance reimbursements for traditional Hawaiian healing, a lot of times in the community, that goes hand in hand with licensure and registration. And so as you think through those things, just know that while we might want to talk about one, what's going to end up happening in the community is we talk about both. So I just wanted to, we just wanted to highlight that component as you consider this resolution moving forward and share those comments with you. I'm here for any questions. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, that's all we have signed up. Any questions, members? Oh, Bellotti.
So I see that it's comments. And then what I'm teasing out from your comments is that licensure is a difficult thing around native Hawaiian practices.
It can be a very complex conversation. So this conversation is more than 30 years old and has sort of evolved over time, yes.
So is this measure the appropriate way to initiate or to continue this conversation? Or might there be another way other than this measure?
One of the things that we would maybe recommend is that we pause and have those conversations start maybe over the summer so that we can restart in the next legislative session. That being said, I don't think, there's not a one-size-fits-all. This conversation has been ongoing for more than 30 years. And so while we would recommend that some of these conversations sort of restart in the community, given that that is one of our roles as convening native, traditional native Hawaiian healers, we don't see that there's a singular path, which is why we registered comments as opposed to opposition or support. Because that's one way that we see appropriate, but just because it doesn't happen that way doesn't mean, I don't think that that's the only way that can happen. But our, but we, because our role as conveners is to do just that, not to tell folks what to do, but to bring folks around the table, that would be our ideal situation. But I don't think that's the only way we can move forward.
And I guess I ask because of my background in the health arena, and that I know that there had been conversations when the Medicaid waiver had sought out permission.
Yes.
And that it raised a lot of difficult community conversations, that this reso could have that same kind of effect, and that maybe we need to pause this process to let you folks do the convening.
So I do think we have, based from the 1115 waiver moving forward, I know that there, I was not with Papa Ollo Lohkahi, but I was aware of what was happening in the community. And there were a lot of difficult conversations that happened. I do think we have moved forward from there. We are not at the same place that we were then. So I will say that. And we have had conversations with the MedQuest Division as well as our the healers that we bring to the table. And so I think, I just want to highlight that I don't think we're in the same position as with the 1115 waiver. That being said, I do, we do recommend, or we would like to see more of these conversations happen in the community and start there, or I should say restart, because like I said, it's, these conversations, they didn't stop just because the 1115 waiver didn't include the traditional Hawaiian healing, put it that way. But I don't know that we've gotten to the point where we would say, where we wouldn't welcome starting those conversations in the community, restarting them first during the interim.
Chair, I'm sorry I'm asking these questions, but one last question, because I think this actually just is a concern of mine. If it could be perceived in any way that an additional insurance mandate, even for something as truly worthy as this, as these practices, could harm Affordable Care Act and implementation of the Affordable Care Act, given our current context, even more so now with the current context of this that we find ourselves in nationally and statewide, do you think a pause is even maybe even more of an important way to culturally go through this appropriately?
I'm not sure. I don't want to answer because I'm not sure that we've done that analysis thoroughly. And so I don't want to give an answer that's premature for our analysis. Where we were coming from is just because of the conversations that I had, as I had shared, have been ongoing. And because they've sort of been ongoing, we sort of know where the pulse is. And one of the things that we think might be ideal is if we, you know, restart in the interim with some convenings in the community. But again, one of the reasons we chose specifically for comments is so that we sort of can make it, make folks aware that that's our ideal situation. That doesn't mean we speak for all traditional Hawaiian healers. And because of that, we're sort of open to seeing different paths. But I do, again, I can't speak to the ACA, but I can say with fairly, it is, I guess it's a personal opinion, but from what I've seen personally from the 1115 waiver to today, is that the conversations have moved forward. So we are, we are a little bit farther along. I, we do just, from our perspective as a Native Hawaiian Health Board, would like to see the convenings restart at the community level. But if it doesn't, I think we can still move forward and continue the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any more questions? Okay, we will move on to HCR 147, or HR 147, establishing a legislative working group for the continued oversight of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands Execution of Funds appropriated by Act 279 Sessions Law of Hawaii 2022. First up is Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Okay, not present. Health Committee of the Democratic Party of Hawaii submitted testimony in support. Department of Hawaiian Homelands also in support. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, no one to ask questions of. We will move on to HCR 193 HD1, HR 186 HD1, requesting the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to convene a working group to examine and consider the transfer of native Hawaiian burial site management under Chapter 6E Hawaii Revised Statutes from the State Historic Preservation Division to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. McKenna Woodward, on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. OHA strongly supports this resolution and appreciates the legislature's continued recognition of the need to ensure the care, protection, and proper treatment of native Hawaiian burials. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs has long held kuliana under Hawaii Revised Statutes, Chapter 6E, and is uniquely positioned to lead a collaborative inquiry into how to improve the native Hawaiian burial component of the state's historic review program. OHA stands ready to fulfill the role envisioned in this resolution, and we are committed to convening a process that is inclusive, culturally grounded, and solution-oriented. OHA is also proposing to amend the community membership provision at Page 5, lines 31 to 35, to include recognized lineal and cultural descendants who self-identify and submit their names for selection by a majority vote of the working group. Mahalo for your consideration of this measure.
Thank you. DLNR, SHPD, Jessica Puth, State Historic Preservation Division. Okay, not present. There, we received seven testimonies in support, zero in opposition, one with comments for HCR 193 HD1, and one support, one opposition, one comments for HR 186 HD1. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, we will move on to HCR 8, HR 8, urging the United States Department of Justice to include Hawaii in the Missing or Murdered Indigenous Persons Regional Outreach Program. Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. McKenna Woodward, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, in strong support of HCR 8 and HR 8. OHA is deeply concerned about the disproportionate violence faced by native Hawaiians, particularly women and girls, as highlighted in our work with the Commission on the Status of Women, on the Missing and Murdered Native Hawaiian Women and Girls Task Force and its 2022 report. The report revealed native Hawaiian women and girls comprise over 40% of all missing persons cases in the state, despite representing only about 10% of the total population. The report called for systemic change, better data collection, and improved federal coordination, especially with sectors like the military and tourism industries. In response, the military launched Operation Cakey Shield to combat child exploitation and human trafficking. HCR 8 and HR 8 are a critical step toward addressing the task force's recommendations and ensuring Hawaii's inclusion in the national efforts to combat the missing and murdered indigenous persons crisis. These measures will help secure the resources, justice, and protections that native Hawaiian communities desperately need. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. That is the only person signed up to testify. For HCR 8, we received foreign support, zero opposed, zero comments. And HR 8, same thing, foreign support, zero opposed, zero comments. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, members, questions? No questions. We will move on to HCR 124 HD1, HR 120 HD1, encouraging the Kauai Huilani Center for Hawaiian Language of the University of Hawaii at Manoa to further provide learning resources and opportunities that promote Hawaiian language and culture. There's no testimony for this one. Is there anyone in person wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to HCR 180 HD1, requesting the State Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions, Department of Law Enforcement, homeless coordinators of each county, county law enforcement, and social services providers to work collaboratively and effectively to address homelessness in Hawaii. address homelessness in Hawaii. There's no one signed up to testify. We did receive testimony with comments from the statewide office on homeless and housing solutions, and three support testimonies, zero opposed. Is there anyone wishing to provide testimony in the room on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. No one to ask questions of. We'll move on to HCR 72, HR 65, urging the Ethics Commission of each county to adopt standards similar to that applicable to state-elected officials and officers as adopted and enforced by the state Ethics Commission. For this one, there's no one signed up. We did receive four support testimonies, zero opposed, zero comments. And then for HR 65, we received two in support. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify on Zoom? Okay, moving on. HCR 100, HR 96, requesting the state of Hawaii to require that any individual or group that administers the mandatory harassment and discrimination training to employees demonstrate adequate competency in LGBTQ+, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and more identities, identity and culturally specific gender identity relevant to Hawaii. Okay. We received testimony and support from the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission, Pride at Work Hawaii on Zoom. Michael?
Oh, no, sorry, I'm not here on behalf of Pride at Work. Sorry, that was a mistake. I'm here on behalf of the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission.
Okay, do you want to say a little bit?
Oh, yeah, sure. Michael Glory Jr., Vice Chair of the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission, he had pronouns. You should have received our written testimony and strong support of this measure. Any, anybody asking why this is necessary, all you have to do is read the comment section on any social media post that would bring justice to equality, or you talk about LGBTQIA+ plus issues. We are very happy to see that this resolution does recognize that there is a huge distinction between Western civilizations LGBTQIA+ and as well as we talk about Native Hawaiian and other Polynesian embracement of Mahu, Fa'afina, and that this definitely needs to be put into practice here in the state. And we definitely need to make sure that this, that we do have the training that is requested in this resolution. We do want to go on record that the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission is always available to help with any type of these things, and that is what you all put us into statute to do. So I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in the room or on Zoom? Okay, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We will move on to HCR 30, HR 29, requesting each county police department to increase enforcement against out-of-state vehicles operating on public roadways that have not been properly registered in the appropriate county. We received support testimony from the Department of Transportation. Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. No one to ask questions of. We'll move on to HCR 43 HD1, requesting the Department of Law Enforcement and Department of Transportation to study the possibility of a highway patrol and the installation of speed cameras along major freeways and highways in primary areas of speeding, including the impact it would have on the district courts. HCR 43. We received one testimony and opposition, and that's all. Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, no one to ask questions of. We will move on to HCR 119 HD1, HR 115 HD1, endorsing Taiwan's international participation, supporting the signing of a United States-Taiwan bilateral trade agreement, and commemorating the relationships and exchanges between the state of Hawaii and Taiwan. Department of Business Economic Development Tourism on Zoom? Timothy?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am here with the Department of Business Economic Development Tourism. On behalf of the, we stand on our testimony and support of resolutions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions for a testifier? Okay, no questions. We will move on to HCR 62 HD1, requesting that the Sheriff's, Sheriff Division of the Department of Law Enforcement fly the National League of Families of American prisoners and missing in Southeast Asia's flag year-round at the state capitol. We did not receive any testimony for this measure. Is there anyone online or in person wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to HR 57, requesting that the Sheriff Division of the Department of Law Enforcement fly the National League of Families of American prisoners and missing in Southeast Asia's flag year-round at the state capitol. No testimony for this one was submitted. Is there anyone wishing to provide testimony in the audience or on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our final measure, HCR 109 HD1, HR 105 HD1, supporting free and responsible scholastic journalism and actively supporting and honoring the First Amendment of the United States Constitution in student publications. HCR 109. We received Department of Education? Okay, they're not present, but they submitted comments. Leif Allgood?
Hi. Thank you to Representative Poipoi and Tonas. My name is Leif Allgood. I am a junior at McKinley High School, and I am a first-year reporter for The Pinion, our school newspaper. And I just want to say I stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, we have Sean McLaughlin.
Aloha. Thank you for this opportunity to share a comment. I also submitted written testimony. Mainly want to highlight the benefit for student journalists, particularly on neighbor islands and in communities that don't get a lot of other news coverage. This will hopefully really help students to get, get into the communities that are not well-covered and create some new news content that will benefit the whole community, not just the students and the schools that they're part of. So I wanted to thank you very much for supporting this measure. Aloha.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? That's all we have that signed up. Okay, please come on up and introduce yourself, and after you conclude, if you can leave your name and ask the sign-up sheet. Okay.
Thank you, Representatives Tarnas and Poipoi, for the opportunity to testify in support of HR 109 and HCR 105. My name is Malia Manuel, and I am a member of the editorial board for McKinley High School's Pinion. The student publication release form targeted by these resolutions is unnecessarily hindering student journalists from performing our duties. As student journalists, we are already guided by multiple ethical codes in everything we do. By passing these resolutions, we will gain the freedom to more effectively seek the truth, minimize harm, and maintain accountability and transparency in our work.
Thank you. Thank you. I actually have it. Malia Manuel, yes. Got it. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Thank you, Representatives Tarnas and Poipoi, for the opportunity to testify in support of HR 105. My name is Nini Nguyen. I am sophomore and a second-year reporter and assistant editor for The Pinion, McKinley High School's school newspaper. Interacting with our community is a way to increase media literacy. Research found that almost 80% of adults have never met or been interviewed by journalists. Interacting with as many people in our community as possible is one way to solve that problem. This resolution will help us achieve this by ensuring that FERPA does not restrict the pool of students that we can reach through the work we do for our paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Dominic Neal?
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and members of the committee, for the opportunity to testify in support of House Resolution 105 and House concurrent Resolution 109. My name is Dominic Neal, and I'm a junior at McKinley High School, where I also have the opportunity to serve as an editor for our school newspaper, The Pinion. I also want to thank Representatives Peruso, Amado, Bellotti, and Cochran for introducing this resolution, as well as the Department of Education for publicly supporting it. As student journalists, we take our responsibility seriously. Every story begins with a pitch session where we carefully consider ethical concerns. We follow strict guidelines to ensure transparency, clearly stating the purpose of each interview and ensuring sources understand how their words and photos may be published. A key principle in journalism is minimizing harm, and there have been at times when out of caution, we've chosen to involve a student's parent before publication. These decisions balance our ethical responsibilities with the importance of telling the story. I've covered a wide range of stories, from football games to political victories to investigative articles, including a cold case breakthrough on our campus. In every article, I've prioritized accuracy and dignity in our reporting. Excessive oversight can hinder our ability to report on important issues. Journalism is about seeking the truth, and having the freedom to do so is crucial. HR 105 and HCR 109 recognize the impact of student journalism by empowering young voices and fostering critical thinking, responsibility, and civic engagement, skills that benefit not only students such as myself, but our schools, communities, and the future of Hawaii. I respectfully urge this committee to support HR 105 and HCR 109. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. That looks like all we had signed up to testify. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Rose Ganotici. Thank you for allowing me to testify, and I am a reporter for the McKinley High School's Pinion, which is our school newspaper. And I just want to say that I stand on my written testimony in support of HCR 109 and HR 105.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of HR 105 and HCR 109. My name is Cindy Reeves, and I advise McKinley High School's student newspaper, The Pinion. I'd like to thank Representative Peruso, Bellotti, and Cochran for introducing these resolutions so this issue can get a public-on-the-record discussion. I was very pleased to learn via the DOE's testimony at the Education Committee hearing on March 20th that the department does concur with this resolution and is in the process of clarifying this information and plans to review and discuss the forms mentioned in the resolution. The Education Committee added a deadline of December 31st, 2025, and I request that the deadline be the start of the school year 2526. The DOE was aware of this issue before these resolutions were introduced, and continuing to use an obsolete form will cause confusion and increased liability. I'm available for any questions, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, members, any questions? Rep. Peruso?
Ms. Nguyen? I just wanted to thank you for your journalism. I've read many of your articles, and some of them having to do with this issue in particular, and very grateful for your work. And I just wanted to note for your understanding that it was precisely the work of you and your peers and your teacher that actually has reversed DOE policy. So while the DOE may have said for many years that they've been contemplating this question, I know from personal experience, because I've had multiple interactions with principals, and I'm sure you have had some interaction with your principal about this, that all the principals understood that this was an issue of FERPA. So, and it really provided a barrier, a really hard thing to overcome for you to do your journalism work. And I just wanted to ask you if you and your, your peers understood that you have actually reversed Department of Education policy that has been longstanding. Are you aware of that?
No, I was not.
Yeah, it's a very big deal, and I'm, I'm very proud of you. So congratulations and good job.
Thank you.
Members, any more questions? Okay, we got everybody here, it looks like, almost. Okay, move into decision-making. HCR 158 HD1, HR 153 HD1, recommendation is to pass as is. Any concerns or questions? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, I'll be taking the vote on both HCR 158 HD1 and HR 153 HD1 at the same time. Recommendation of Vice Chair is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Bellotti?
Aye.
Thank you. Representative Cochran is excused. Representative Hashem? Representative Kahaloa?
Aye.
Representative Peruso?
Aye.
Representative Takayama?
Aye.
Representative Todd? Representative Garcia?
Aye.
Representative Shimizu? Thank you very much. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HCR 55 and HR 51, recommendation is to adopt the draft proposed in the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence testimony. I believe this is pages three, four, five, and six of their testimony. And then to that adopted amended language, technical, make technical non-substantive amendments mostly for typing, typos, formatting, and clarity, consistency, and style. So that's the recommendation. Questions, comments, concerns? Rep. Shimizu?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question or concern that the judiciary was kind of denying responsibility for this, and because it is requesting the judiciary to do it, I wasn't sure if that had any relevance.
Yeah, so the judiciary did come opposed to the, the resolution that we are hearing. And in the testimony from the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence, they do propose a slightly, actually kind of different approach, which is to make it into a working group rather than a study. I think it's, there's still time moving forward in the Senate if, when they review that draft, there's still issues, if it's heard in the Senate, that I think they could, you know, bring those up there and hopefully have them try to resolve it along the way and keep the conversation going.
Thank you, Chair. My apologies. Thank you.
Okay, so the recommendation, that's the recommendation. Any more questions or concerns? This is for HCR 55 and HR 51. Chair for the vote?
Thank you. We're voting on HCR 55 and HR 51. Recommendation of Vice Chair is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Recognizing the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone else, is there anyone voting with reservations? Anyone voting no? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Okay, HCR 23 HD1, I hear the concerns of the Public Defender's Office, and my recommendation is at this time to pass it out as is, but I would recommend that the Public Defender's Off, not Public Defender, yeah, Public Defender's Office stay, you know, involved through the process and bring their concerns as this moves forward. So that's the recommendation, as is. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote?
Thank you. Vice Chair recommendation, pass HCR 23 HD1 as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Recognizing the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone voting no? Anyone voting with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HCR 174 HD1, HR 170, recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions, comments? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Vice Chair's recommendation, HCR 174, HD1, and HR 170, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Recognizing the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone voting with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HCR 185. Recommendation is to pass as is, but I hear the concerns of Papa Olulokahi. I encourage them as well to stay involved as this goes through the process and keep raising awareness of those concerns. And I hope that in the interim and that the convenings in the community can occur, because I think that's really important. So that is the recommendation, as is, for HCR 185. Questions, comments, concerns, members? Can I express concerns?
And actually, the rationale for why I think I'm going to vote no on this. I've consistently voted no on any insurance mandates that we've been imposing. And what this is typically for is a mechanism, it's a sunrise analysis to create an insurance mandate. I think the questions that I have raised and will continue to raise have to do with the enactment of the Affordable Care Act and the complexity of how the Affordable Care Act intersects with our prepaid healthcare law. And in the context that we have where everything is under threat from the federal government, where benefits that have long been fought for, including those healthcare benefits that we fought for in this community in 1974, this, us going down this continued path is just not wise until we get clarity around this question and find a way forward. And unfortunately, what I've seen over the past few years through the auditor's analysis is that question is never answered. And it's actually a very serious question that needs to be answered. If the auditor were to take it up, I would be grateful for that. So I'm expecting that this will move forward, and maybe if this continues to move forward, that this gets raised at some point. I will, you know, I feel that as, when I was serving as Chair, I'd raised this issue time and time again. And I just think us going down this course continues to, one, raise expectations in the community that we shouldn't. We should have this question answered clearly for the sake of policymaking moving forward. And so for those reasons, Chair, I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair, I'll be voting with reservations for many of the same reasons.
Okay, with reservations for Rep. Peruso. No for Rep. Bellotti. Okay, any additional comments, concerns, questions? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Vice Chair's recommendation on HCR 185 is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. And we have a no vote for Rep. Bellotti and with reservations from Rep. Peruso. Anyone else voting no? Anyone else voting with reservations? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HR 147. A stop, recommendation is to pass out a House draft one, so to make one amendment. And this would be on page two relating to the group, the membership that makes up the working group. We are going to remove Representative Jean Ward and replace Representative Jean Ward with Representative Diamond Garcia. And then we're going to strike out the 18th District and add the 42nd District. Just changing that membership. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none. Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Vice Chair's recommendation on HR 147 is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Recognizing the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone voting with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HCR 193, HD1, HR 186, HD1. Recommendation is to pass out a House draft two. And the amendment would be to accept the, from OHA's testimony, the amendment offered in OHA's testimony. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 193, HD1, and HR 186, HD1. Vice Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone voting with reservations? Anyone voting no? Chair, Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. And members. HCR 8, HR 8. Recommendation is to pass as is. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 8 and HR 8. Recommendation of Vice Chair is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone voting aye with reservations? Reservations for Representative Garcia? Anyone else voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HCR 124, HD1, and HR 120, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 124, HD1, and HR 120, HD1. Recommendation of Vice Chair is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran, is there anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair and members. HCR 180, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 180, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is.
Yep.
Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. HCR 72, HR 65. Recommendation is to pass as is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 72 and HR 65. Recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members and Chair. HCR 100, HR 96. Recommendation is to pass as is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 100 and HR 96. Vice Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Is there anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no?
No vote.
No vote for Representative Garcia. Reservations for Representative Shimizu. Anyone else voting no? Anyone else voting with reservations? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair and members. HCR 30, HR 29. As is. Questions, comments, concerns? Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 30 and HR 29. Recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Is there anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair and members. HCR 43, HD1. As is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Voting on HCR 43, HD1. Recommendation of Vice Chair is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no?
No vote.
No vote for Representative Garcia. Any other no votes? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members and Chair. HCR 119, HD1, HR 115, HD1. As is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 119 and HR 115. Recommendation of Vice Chair is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Anyone voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair and members. HCR 62, HD1. Recommendation is to defer. Any questions or comments, concerns? Okay. HR 57. Recommendation is to defer. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. HCR 109, HD1, HR 105, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Questions or comments or concerns? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. I have a comment.
Okay.
I support this resolution. Thank, it's great to see the young people come here and testify. Very, very encouraging to see the young people testify. I just have a concern if maybe there should be language about age-appropriate guidelines, because it does talk about bypassing some parental approvals. So that would be my only concern, is that it's age-appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Chair for the vote.
Voting on HCR 109 and HR 105. Recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran. Anyone voting aye with reservations? Reservations for Representative Garcia? And reservations for Representative Shimizu? Anyone else voting aye with reservations? Anyone voting no? Vice Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. And we are adjourned.